Welcome everybody, thank you for being here. Let me remind you it's a formal city council meeting, which means the rules of decorum are enforced. And with that, I'm gonna start the meeting. Let's stand for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom of speech. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible. Please be seated. City secretary, we have a quorum with all council members being in person and present. Brief of notice of meeting, please.
Thank you mayor, notice of this meeting was posted by 3pm on Friday, June 20.
Thank you. Any public comments?
We have one from Joanna Lacston, Ward 5.
Alright Joanna, come on up, state your name and ward please. Remember council can't respond to you.
That's fine. Joanna Lacston, Ward 5. Hello, no mustard buddy here. I met, had a really great meeting today with David and Jessica from over at PNC. And we were working on what's going on with the new map here. And so we kind of are the, I don't know, most of you may or may not be aware that the C2A at one point sort of fell off the map. And so we're actually working on, there's three areas on the map that are dedicated to C2A. And so the only thing we're asking is, we are have, we'll have a draft at the next PNC meeting, we're meeting at 4:30. We're gonna present that to PNC about what our ideas are, are and the workshop, it starts at 4:30. But we just want to let you guys know, if you're gonna codify the map, if you can hold off on it a little bit, you might wanna, might change some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, no other public comments?
No.
Okay, moving on to public hearings. Remember, if you come to speak for one of the items on the public hearing, council can also not respond to you and it's a three minute time limit. So we are gonna begin public hearings at 5:32pm. Public hearing A, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding replat 2024-06-01. A replat application allowing the applicant Penelope V Avery to amend the setback requirements of the subject property. The subject property is located at 1308 North Forest Street and is legally described as lot 7, block 47, North Edition, located in the city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, according to the plat of said subdivision recorded in plat envelope number 108 in the office of the county clerk of Brewster County, Texas. The record property owner is Penelope V Avery. The property ID of the subject property is 11666. The current zoning classification of the property is R1, one family district. If the reply is approved, the zoning classification will remain R1 family district. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Seeing none, we're moving on to item B, public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the first reading of ordinance 2024-07-02 and ordinance approving rezone application 2024-06-01. Amending the official zoning map of the city by rezoning the property located at 1003 East Gallego and legally described as .5 acres more or less line in Brewster County, Texas lot 10. The west one half of lot 9, 2, and the west one half of lot 3, except the north 20, various of lot 1, 2, and the west one third, 3, and block 33 Hancock Editions south of the railroad, according to the map plat on of said addition filed in plat envelope number 112 Brewster County plat records. Rezoning the subject property from R4 Mobile Home District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Alright, seeing none, moving on to public hearing C, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit 2024-06-02, a short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at 503 North Harrison. The property owner of record is Jam and Jam Enterprises LLC. The partial ID of the subject property is 11044. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing public hearings at 5:35pm. Moving on to presentations, recognitions, there are none, no proformations. Community interest items, mayor announcements, I just want to remind everybody of the 4th of July celebration that's gonna happen at the courthouse, 9:30, the parade lines up at the civic center. You don't need to pre-register, just show up. 10:30, the parade starts, booths and games open, 11:15, we'll have the national anthem and welcome from the city county officials on the courthouse steps. There will be booths, car show, food, games on the courthouse lawn, starting at 10:30am and throughout the day, special events until 3:30. We'll have the Big Ben Community Band, Petting Zoo with the Wasserman Ranch. Al Haney on the saxophone, tug of war with Alpine Fire Department. Alpine Fire Department Hot Dog Eating Contest, Car Show, Patriotic Sing Along at First Christian Church. And they sent an email to say that that starts at 1pm. I believe we're gonna try to have a sign there that lists what time different activities start. The car show, just for fun, skills race, performance by Soul Ross, cast of Robin Hood, and music by Rick Ruiz and the Wind. At noon, barbecue chicken lunch is available at the American Legion. I believe it was $15. 1:30, we're gonna recreate the town picture of the courthouse. 2:30 is the Alpine Cowboys baseball game, one of a doubleheader at Coconut Field against the Austin Weirdos. 10pm, American Legion fireworks at Coconut Park. And from 9 to midnight, there will be a dance on Soul Ross Avenue at the American Legion with the Bullet Bucket of Bullets Band. So that's going on. The Let It Rain fundraiser last weekend, I spoke to Lance Johnson and he said it was about $28,000 that was raised for the artists in the community. And then also Alpine Historic Association is working, and we'll talk about this later, on a National Register Historic District. City manager announcements.
I'm just gonna follow up with the festivities, because it is the 4th of July, the city offices will be closed. So if there's anyone who will need to have an emergency, a water leak or anything like that, they'll need to call the police department so that we can get that schedule. I do encourage everyone to participate in the recreation of the town picture. I think that's a wonderful idea. We also have a monthly cleanup scheduled for Saturday, September 20th, meeting at the railroad park on the corner of Holland and Fitz Street. This is one of our monthly annual clean, our monthly cleanups. We choose different areas of Alpine and try to help pick up the trash and clean up the area. And then also, one of the big events coming up that the city does sponsor is Viva Big Ben, which is July 24th through the 28th, and you can buy your tickets at various locations and online.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone?
No updates at this time, thank you.
Okay, councilmember, all of us?
Um, I had my first meeting with that Family Crisis Center. And I'm very impressed, that good job that they did to the community, so I feel very honored to be part of that board now.
Thank you for being a part of that board. Okay, councilmember Nance? Councilmember Escoveda? Councilmember Stevens?
So we've got four items. One, people were being asked to line up for the parade as early as 8:30. So that was the latest that came out today, Kirsten put that out. Second, for those who are not aware, Soul Ross State University is moving athletics from Division 3 to Division 2. It will allow them to award scholarships. That starts this fall. Amanda Workman had a session up two weeks ago on that, so that's a big deal for Soul Ross. Third item I had is just from Alpine Country Club Estates. Megan's talked about training of Eddie and the Streets Crew. That has started. There are a couple of states working some of the holes out there, and I met with some residents yesterday, so it's nice to see that underway. The, the last item I have is the Hotel ICAC Tax Committee met on June 27th. Our next meeting is on July 11th. We went through, A, went through a series of evaluating each of the submissions in terms of making sure that all the criteria to meet. Then they started through a process of grading each of them to make some assessments of quality. And that will finish on July 11th, and they'll come, put their recommendations together for coming back to council. So I know we have, you mentioned it, Mayor, and I know there's a item on the agenda, talking about historic Alpine. I'm sure that'll be a good discussion, because I've discussed it before. That's all I've got.
Awesome. Alright, moving on to changes to posted agenda. Okay, I thought you said something. Items to be continued or withdrawn, are there any?
So I have one, I'd like to continue 11C, the reason being, since we had our last city council meeting, the agenda was placed. My mom was in the hospital for a week. She's now out, and we're going through all the revamp activities, and I didn't do enough work to complete to be able to bring that to council, so I'll, I'll work with you and push it to the next meeting.
11?
11, I mean, sorry, 10C.
Oh, 10C, okay.
Discuss the next steps or conference or plan.
Okay, alright, so for this, we need a motion. Rick made the motion. I need a second for us to put this on the next agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Alright, let's vote.
Alright.
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 Alright, city secretary, we're moving item 10C to the next city council meeting. It was confirmed with the majority vote of council. Alright, anything else? Items to be withdrawn or continued? Alright, items to be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion. Are there any? Okay, seeing none, action items to be added to the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, time sensitive items? Alright, seeing none, we're moving on to the consent agenda, city secretary.
Thank you mayor, tonight's consent agenda contains five items. Item 1, A is approval of June 18th, 2024, we're gonna meet in minutes. Item B, approval of the fiscal year 2024-2025 city council meeting calendar. Item C, approval of 2024-2025 holiday calendar. Item D, approval of the appointment of Nancy Burton to the place two position on the animal advisory board. And item E, approval of special use permit 2024-06-02. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at 503 North Harrison. The property owner of record is Jam and Jam Enterprises LLC. The parcel ID of the subject property is 11044.
Need a motion?
We accept the consent agenda as presented.
I need a second.
I see.
Alright, let's vote.
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, city secretary, the consent agenda passes as written unanimously by city council. Items removed, there were none. Moving on to reports and presentations, there are none. So moving on to information or discussion items. Item A, if you would read that and begin the discussion and note that, that Abby Branch is here to speak as well as Ellis with Post Oak Preservation.
Mayor, if I can also provide, Darren has reached out and gotten some additional information regarding this.
Okay, alright, good. So councilmember Stone, if you would read A and then lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Discussion item A is to discuss the Alpine Historical Association proposal and grant application to engage Post Oak Historical Solutions to conduct a historic district survey for downtown Alpine and Coconut Field. And be happy to open it up to councilmembers to, to update us, including councilmember Nance, and also looking forward to hearing from Abby and Post Oak as well. We've received quite a few emails from the community, folks, both business owner representatives of the area of our, of our school system, just to name a few, as well as the Historical Society. Looking forward to a good conversation. I know we've had a few maybe misunderstandings, but also getting educated into what this possibly could be. And I'm also looking forward to getting to know what Post Oak Historical Solutions can provide the city as, as well. If I could hand it over to councilmember Nance to update us.
And you guys might want to come out, because he may have questions for you. Just come on up and introduce yourselves into the microphone.
I would probably just start with you guys, so we're all on the same page. Y'all can kind of tell us the gist of everything.
So, thank you all.
So just introduce yourself.
I'm Abby Branch. I live in Ward 5. And this is Ellis Mumford Russell. Mumford Russell is a three name. Abby Ward Branch. And Ellis has a home outside, and I'll let you introduce yourself. Okay, okay. So I am the director of Historic Alpine Inc., also known as Alpine Historical Association. We have been active in the community since January 2021. We are a startup of an existing organization that was founded in the early 2000s by Stephanie Haines and a group of great Alpine, Alpine community members. And we have been working our tail off for the last four years to not only increase the knowledge, begin education on, on historic preservation, increase the, the appreciation of our historical resources. And in all of that, I have learned a lot. We have done a lot of research on the different types of historical district or historic districts. And we've also done a lot of research on if Alpine could benefit from a historic district. There are two main types of historic districts. There's a locally governed that is a historic district that you may all be aware of, and that's something that would be handled by planning and zoning and city council. And then there's also the, a national registered historic district, and that's what I'll have, I'll have Ellis explain. So there are, we did not just make this up, and you know, we, we did a lot of, a lot of research. We looked at a lot of different cities across the United States, but specifically Texas, and have seen that historic districts not only increase tourism, cultural heritage, our cultural tourism, small business, entrepreneurship, it also about, elevates the, the appearance of properties in downtown. And it also helps us maintain our historical resources, because once they're gone, they're gone. Alpine is rich in history. The Texas Historic Commission, which Ellis will tell us, they are very interested in Alpine becoming a historic district. But it is very important to note that the type of historic district that we are proposing has no regulations. And that is a big misconception. So I'm gonna turn this over to Ellis and I'll just, oh, and I did, I do have a couple of, y'all have to share, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm pronouncing, I can bring you, if that's okay. On what, and is this okay?
No.
No.
Sorry.
Abby, if you want to leave them with us.
Okay, perfect.
It's just, it's a definition.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Just leave me one and we'll, we'll scan.
We actually have a copy of that at the back.
Oh, so we already have that, that's.
I'll just scan back.
Alright. Yeah, thanks Abby. So my name's Ellis Mumford Russell. I'm the founding and managing partner of Post Oak Preservation Solutions. I've met some of you all already. We got in touch with Abby after we started some work here in Alpine on the Holland Hotel and the Maverick, and that's kind of how this, this conversation all started.
And Ellis?
Yeah.
What ward are you?
I'm sorry. I don't live in Alpine. I do have a property just south of town, near Elephant Mountain, but I live in Austin most of the time, sorry about that.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. So I'm here to, of course, I'll, I'll give you some basics about what this type of historic designation is, what it means, what the process looks like, and then I'm happy to answer any questions, of course. So as Abby mentioned, what we're contemplating is a National Register of Historic Places Historic District. And that would cover most of what you all would consider downtown Alpine. So it's gonna be mostly your commercial buildings and institutional buildings. The National Register of Historic Places is the official record of historic places in, in the country. And so it can be individual buildings, it can be historic districts, like we're talking about here. It can be landscapes and archaeological sites. It can even be vessels, like ships and submarines. Those can all be National Register designated. And what it creates is this definitive history of that place. So it is, involves extensive research, archival research, oral histories, things like that, so that we're really coming together to provide that comprehensive story. Importantly, like Abby alluded to, National Register designation does not impose any regulatory burden on property owners. So unlike, you know, there's certainly misconceptions and, and it gets confusing, I know, because there's local historic districts, which if that was created by the city, might impose restrictions. But National Register District, what we are proposing, no restrictions on property owners. It does have benefits. So like Abby mentioned, you know, heritage tourism is a big part of the economy in Texas and elsewhere. And I like to bring up examples of San Antonio and Fredericksburg as really banner examples of towns that have established historic districts and a really established historic character. And there's a kind of consensus around what that character is, and creating that district helps build that consensus. Additionally, National Register designation avails property owners of a number of funding mechanisms that can help them maintain their buildings, maintain their character. And so there's a lot of grants that are directed at National Registered Designated Properties, or that even municipalities and municipal agencies can apply for on behalf of National Register properties. And additionally, there are state and federal historic tax credits. Those are available for property owners who want to rehabilitate their buildings. The Texas credit is worth 25% of rehab expenses, and for qualifying building, you could add the federal credit for an additional 20%. So I can answer lots of questions about the details of the tax credit, but that money is available to building owners in the historic district as, as an opportunity there. And then just a brief overview of the, of the process, and then I'm happy to answer questions. The process that we've outlined, that I think you all have in your packet, is phased. It takes about two years. It starts with a ton of research. Unfortunately, we've gotten a head start on that, because we've been having to research the history of Alpine to tell the story of Holland Hotel and Maverick that we are currently nominating to the National Register. But a lot of research, a lot of time spent in the archives. And then we'll come out with a team to survey every single building in our proposed survey area, which are estimates about 200 buildings. So we'll photograph, document, inventory, all of those buildings. We'll find out the history of those buildings. And then from that, we do some analysis and determine what that final district boundary is. And then we apply with the Texas Historical Commission and work through that nomination process. I think, you know, the survey and research and that first submission to Texas Historical Commission happens in about a year. And then the following year is kind of revising and refining with the Texas Historical Commission and eventually the National Park Service. That's a very brief, you know, 10,000 foot view of that, and I'm happy to answer.
Include coconut.
Yes, I'm sorry. Our proposal also talks about Coconut Field, which I just came from. So Michelle just took me through that, and, and I've come before for a game too. So we have, separate from the downtown district, a proposal to do an individual designation for Coconut Field. And it would include not just the field, but some of those outlying properties that were part of that original coconut donation. And you know, the intention of that is obviously to honor that history, really gain that national recognition of its significance, but also this grant opportunity is huge for that. Since it's municipally owned, that might be a really good avenue to get some funding together for some of the deferred maintenance at, at Coconut Field.
Okay, and I just want to say, is it, or ask, is it accurate to say that if I am a commercial building owner and my building is within this district, that I could go in tomorrow if I wanted and just completely demolish it?
Absolutely.
But if I wanted to rehab it and I wanted to take advantage of the money, that's when I have rules.
Exactly, right. So the strings come with money, right?
So if I take the money, I agree to the strings.
That's right.
Otherwise, the owners do not, okay.
Exactly right. And, and you know, if someone decides to move forward with a tax credit application, a lot of what our firm does is, is navigate that process for folks.
So he would help me.
We can advise, yeah, we could help you with what, what is approvable and what's not, and, and speak the same language as the reviewers.
Councilmember Nance, you had some things.
The only thing I'd say, just to start the conversation, and then we can start generally was, I reached out to Justin Regal, if I'm saying that name correctly. And I was wondering on the, for heads and beds, that requirement, what, how that actually happens coming back into historical preservation. And one thing he said, I guess the easiest way is, when I asked him the question, was hotel occupancy tax revenues can be used to gather information, hire consultants, and take other actions to help the city prepare a potential allowable use of HO2, HOT revenue for the project. And you had mentioned that this had been done for Wimberly as well.
That's right, that's right.
Because my clarification was, do HOT monies need to necessarily put immediate heads and beds? And so that is not the case. It can be involved in the process of.
Exactly right. And, and so we, we talked about Wimberly using hot funds for it, but I think R1 and Bridge, Bridgeport and Gatesville all used top funds for their historic districts.
In our hot funds, we have a category in there that says historic, correct?
Yes, so the way we break down the finances is we break it down based on the categories allotted by the state, because the state does require the annual reporting, so it's a little bit easier to print the report and say, okay, this goes to this. And so yes, there is a specific historic preservation category.
And has our hot committee ever used that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Do you want to? We'll have a number of questions. I got you. I'm gonna just, which way you're gonna go around?
Go ahead, because I don't thank anybody.
So. We're, we're talking about the National Registry of Historic Place, that's the fundamental, that's recognized by the Department of Interior.
That's right.
Why create the district? And when I say district, and Abby and I talk a lot about this, I am not in favor of creating a district that requires the properties to follow rules. So the city council's standpoint, you wouldn't see me supporting a district that places rules on property owners. So I'm trying to understand this notion about places which can get federal funding, but what's this need for the term district? Because there's a lot of confusion.
Sure, yeah, and I think, and you can jump into Abby, you know, there's, there's just a number of different types of districts, just like you have a zoning overlay district, all this stuff. The National Park Service, the Department of Interior, allows entire districts to be nominated. The reason why I advocate for doing a district in Alpine is because it's a very efficient and effective way to designate a lot of properties at once and avail all of those properties owner, owners of the funding mechanisms that we've talked about, but it does not create any regulatory burden on them. So unlike maybe a zoning overlay or something like that, that would require setbacks and materials and things like that, this National Register District does not create any burden on the property owners and is held not by the city, but by the National Park Service.
So what's the mechanism under which this gets created?
What do you mean by mechanism?
So city council, you pass ordinances, you pass resolutions, you pass other things. They're not asking us to take any action.
That's right.
I'm trying to understand. If you come back and say, hey, we recommend the historic district, then what happens next in the process?
So there's no action that needs to happen by the city to approve a National Registered Historic District. There's no ordinance that needs to be passed, there's no resolution that needs to be passed. The reason we're talking about this now in city council is because of the ask for hot funds to pay for it.
Now the business in the quote unquote district that is recommended be assigned, and I'm not historic. What are the implications to me as my property?
None, essentially. And so within the boundaries of the district, you will have both what's called contributing and non-contributing resources. Contributing buildings are gonna be ones that are historic age and retain integrity, so they haven't been heavily altered. Non-contributing buildings are gonna be newer ones or ones that have been really heavily altered, but regardless of contributing or non-contributing status, no regulatory implications on those, but only the contributing buildings can access those financial incentives.
So the thought process, what I think I heard was, the only reason for creating a district is to be able to do en masse a number of historic places to be in the National Registry.
That's right. And, and it is, there are criteria for designation, so not every old place is eligible for the National Register, right? You think of the big banner buildings like the Holland Hotel that we're working on the National Register nomination for now. That's easy to get listed individually, but smaller, more everyday buildings are a bit more difficult individually. But as a district, it tells a, a story. It tells a story of the history of Alpine. And so by doing it as a district, it allows us to designate these smaller or simpler buildings that may not rise to the level of individual significance, but then this allows them to, to access those financial incentives.
Who has to do the approval of the National Registry of Places Historic District?
Yeah, so first, we work with the Texas Historical Commission, which is the official state historic preservation office. And we'll work primarily with them throughout much of the process. And like Abby mentioned, you know, in another call we had with their National Register reviewer, he's really enthusiastic about there being a historic district here. He thinks there is one. So we work with, with Texas Historical Commission. Then when they're happy with it, it goes before the Texas State Board of Review. They meet three times a year. And then after that, it gets pushed up to the National Park Service for their final review and approval. So the certification happens at the national level, at the National Park Service, but we work with Texas Historical Commission to get there.
So far, you've not said anything about building owners. When do they get involved?
There will be, we can do a couple of building, sorry, public meetings, so we can do one at the start, if that would be helpful. So we can do one at the start if that would be helpful. And then THC, Texas Historical Commission. Comes out after a draft is in, after you have an idea of that building inventory and they'll conduct a a public meeting as well. And there's notification requirements. Everyone will get a letter about it as well.
So I I'm always following money. Okay, so money moves, someone's gonna get money. Someone is motivated like the Holland Hotel wants money and will close their business. So talk to me about how all the money is moving. Let's assume. This council said, hey, the thirty seven million dollars. You want out of hot funding, which legally we can do. And we say, okay, it makes sense. Now tell me about. What's the next step and how's all that get paid for? Because you're not doing this for free.
No, that 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 hot fund grant is to cover our services.
That's for everything.
That's right.
So to create the historic registered places and the historic district and to do the survey.
That's right.
Okay, I'm I'm still missing it because if I'm, for example, Solpass or I'm the school district responsible for the ballpark. I'm still trying to figure out when I get involved. And what I think I hear is. Once the designation occurs. If I ever want to go after Department of Interior grants. That would be in place. Otherwise, I gotta have a different mechanism to go after dollars.
So a property owner, after we've got this designation done, they can make any choice they want with their building. They could demolish it the next day if they wanted. But if they wanted to seek. Grants or tax credits, you know, they can go for that on their own. They can work with a consultant to help them with that as well. But that's, you know, that's a separate cost in what we're.
Okay, so the way in which all that works, for example, Holland Hotel. Depending you. This process.
That's right.
So if someone says, hey, I got this building. I would like to get some funding. And it may not be designated. Then there's the process for getting designation with Department of Interior. And then they're gonna pay whatever fee it takes to go work that and whatever it takes to look at.
That's right. And so by doing the district, we remove that first step for all of these property owners. So for the Holland, you know, Colin and Brian approached us and they said, do you think this building's eligible? And we said, yeah, so we handled that for them. But in this case, you know, all of these property owners will can skip that step essentially. They're automatically eligible if they choose to seek that funding.
Can I say something? So if and the reason why the district is so important and 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 Ellis. Covered this, but I just want I just want to reiterate. Not every building in the downtown area would qualify because there has to be some historical significance. You know, a significant event, something associated with that building. So that is that is the intent for the for the district. And we have been in conversations with several of the building owners and business owners. So including, you know, A I S D and several of the building owners along Sixth Street and. And they're enthusiastic.
So Abby, if the thirty seven thousand were allocated on a hot. Survey is already done. So the historic place designation within the district is. I know in reviewing, it says the district do not need to be contiguous. So are you gonna turn and draw a band around it or there are places outside a potential district? Would also fit into this bucket or they all run?
Yeah, the preferred. Method, the preferred way of designation is a contiguous district. They they're technically allowed to be discontinuous, but more and more, they're not really enthusiastic about it. So after the survey is completed, we'll we'll find that clean boundary that establishes that most. Intact concentration of historic buildings. And so we'll try to draw a fairly tidy, not too gerrymandered district. To include the most historic resources.
Centennial, Centennial School.
How would they fare in this? Would they then have to take independent action? Go become a historic place?
Yeah, if it's outside that boundary and if it's really, you know, way far out there. The easiest path would be to to do it individually. And that's why we propose that for coconut as well, because it'd be discontinuous from from the downtown district.
Okay, so that's why coconut is separate. So Centennial and other. And you've not proposed any funds for Centennial School. So. That would have to be a separate one. They would have to fund that on their own should they choose to do that, which is.
Sure. Yeah, the advantage that, you know, any future designations would have. Is that by creating this downtown district, we will write the history of Alpine, you know, using the books and using the archives. And so future nominations can crib from that and they're totally allowed to do that. So it will at least streamline that future process.
And there is, you know, this, we, one of the. Missions of the Historical Association is to help others. So we we. Historically, I might continue to raise money. So we can have as many designated properties that want to be designated in Alpine. So that's an important mention. So the Centennial School is near and dear to us. So yeah, that that is is on our radar.
Thank you.
And then also a nonprofit like the Catholic Church, they would be eligible.
Yeah.
On their own.
No, maybe.
So if there is, if there are nonprofit organizations that are in that district. They they can be listed as part of that. And then they could obviously apply for grants. And then interestingly enough, the Texas historic tax credit is available to nonprofits because it's a sellable credit.
So a lot of idea piece is your current concept that be part of the district or?
I'm not, I don't remember off the top of my head.
There's some residential in between there.
Yeah.
That's what it's that's what makes it difficult to include that in the district. We would have an entire street of residential. So, you know, maybe we propose a.
And I'll ask, you know, this, the boundary that's in here, it doesn't need to be the final boundary. You know, this is from my knowledge of Alpine from Megan on my team who's been handling a lot of the research and. If we've missed something big, let's take a look at it. You know, my my. Approach is to hedge our bets. Let's do a real big survey area that we can justify. You know, let's do one that's really going to include what we consider that. Commercial and institutional heart of of Alpine. So if we've missed something, we can we can expand those boundaries. It's not binding.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you. Just looking to kind of walk through this and I don't want to step over the benefits before I ask some more pointed questions. It sounds like tourism and obviously the Texas Historical Commission is going to help us with publicity. I guess we get on their website somewhere, other things like that. Tax credits you mentioned and grants for being able to do. Construction or being able to keep the historic district looking as it has in the past. The tax credits are any of those city or local tax credits? Are we losing money?
Yeah, so what I've talked about with the National Register designation is about state and federal historic tax credits. Do you want to talk about the local tax?
Well, I mean, that, no, well, I mean, we we can, there is that ordinance that that. Thank you, Rick, for for pointing out that Alpine has since Main Street. That allows property owners to take advantage if they are property owners of historic properties. I'm assuming that's an historic district because it was it was a bit unclear. That they can apply for tax incentives, which would be a tax freeze if they want to undergo a restoration or renovation process.
Sure.
So but but at this time, the city has never received an application.
Yeah, there there was a discussion with the Holland and maybe the Maverick at one point months back. But the way you're saying that, just to clarify, that besides a freeze, there's no. That a freeze, I suppose, would. Not allow more money to be collected, but we're not saying that the city coppers or the tax. The amount that we're collecting wouldn't go down on any of these buildings.
And in fact, it it will likely eventually elevate. I mean, in in part of our love for history and historical buildings. We also, you know, I'm from Alpine, grew up here, love the city. The revitalization of Alpine and the the overall. Economic health of Alpine is very important to us. And that is what we have researched other cities. I mean, Wimberly, what is the size of Wimberly?
Uh, it's like six thousand.
And and it has positively affected the cities in regards to economic development.
Sure. And just to understand the process that y'all are going through, I'm guessing that there and and help me here. There's been a hot application. Has it been filled out by the Alpine Historical Association?
We filled out the the and the application. I mean, this is important enough to out the historic Alpine. And we we read the the rules and guidelines of of the historic preservation carve out in the hot hotel motel tax. We know that other cities have taken advantage of that and used it. It, we thought it made sense for the long term goal of Alpine. If for some reason, I mean, you know, it doesn't doesn't happen. I mean, it is important enough to store the Alpine that we will raise the money and make sure it happens.
That's the situation. So just to help on that. So now, since I'm the council member participating with the Hyde Committee. We talked about this specifically in our June meeting. It was pulled off the list.
Okay.
I took the action to say, hey, the Hyde Committee's doing its thing. They're following the rules. And I would bring it back forward to council for consideration.
Okay, and so. Just to just to know everything, that all of those hot recommendations, are they coming before council?
They don't have to. So the Hyde Committee and not, you know, out of any.
Sure.
What they do is they meet four times a year, make recommendations to council, council has to approve.
Sure, got it. Awesome. Thank you for that help. And then just noting. You know, I I'm looking who Post Oak is. Have has the Alpine Historical Association looked at any bidding process or are y'all just saying?
Yeah. Right, so we have previously before Post Oak became involved in Alpine. Historic Alpine was working with a group out of Houston. And they were very interested in doing a historic district in Alpine. They have never worked out here. So because Ellis and her team, they have an office in El Paso, they're actively involved with Alpine. They already understand the work in the archives. We can move a lot faster. Without that, you know, without somebody coming in and having to research from scratch.
True.
And but we do know that that, I mean, and we're we're happy to say that other quotations, if we need to pull them. I mean, this this is the typical rate. In fact, it's probably a little less because they already have a knowledge base.
Sure.
Of Alpine. I'll let Ellis talk about that.
Yeah, yeah. But no, I mean, I think, I mean, I toot my own horn, but I just think, you know, we do have knowledge here in Alpine. You know, I've got a place out here and then, like Abby said, we have a team member out in El Paso who's been handling a lot of our research here.
Saves a little money when you need to come out here, you can stay. Yeah, cool. And then just doing my due diligence is Alpine Historical Association. Keeping any money as a middle person in this in any way?
Okay, so explain, explain what.
So it I I'm noting, and this is a good point to go over this, there's thirty one thousand two fifty for Alpine downtown. There's eight thousand for coconut and there's seventeen hundred for a recommendation. Is that the the totality of those expenses?
Correct, but it's not a lump sum. It is a phase.
Okay.
A phase process. I'm sure that, you know, we can, if if we need to pay a lump sum, but.
Yeah.
But Historic Alpine, you know, we do have fundraisers.
Yeah.
I mean, we we are happy to contribute if that is needed.
Yeah, and and just I'm noting, just. Yeah, go ahead.
To clarify, if if the city moves forward with this project, we would pay directly. We would not go through.
There's no middle person.
Yeah, we would pay the bill directly and would have to be invoiced.
Appreciate that clarification. And then just a couple other questions, just on things that I I think, you know, I'm interested in. Can any of, does the national historic. Space have anything to do with beautification or having new native trees or anything like that? Or is that obviously up to uh to property owner?
I think that's going to be up to property owners and any sort of city ordinance.
Yeah, got you, got you. And then. As this proposed, have y'all ever had any of these designations denied or?
No, we never have. Yeah, and we do a handful of these types of district nominations here.
Awesome, awesome. I appreciate you both being here. Thank you for going through my questions.
I have a question. Oh, I'm just wondering, so will the taxes be raised? Like, yeah, like if so, when y'all, if we do pass this. And because a national district, would taxes be raised?
No, oh, oh, raised. Oh, well, it that's what the local ordinance that we spoke about that City of Alpine does have that could freeze the property. Property taxes for areas that are undergoing renovation. It is going to elevate. I mean, if people take advantage of this and everyone in downtown, if there's a historic district in downtown. And every one of these business owners. Bring their their buildings up to code, install sprinklers or fire suppression systems, install new roofs. Restore their storefronts. I mean, the the property value. I would I would think that everybody's value does go up positively. But with that, you also would have new business and commerce to support that. And that is how why we study so many other cities that have this. You can easily reference any, you can go, you know, reference any city in Texas that has a historic district. And look at their hotel motel tax dollars or look at their just their tax revenue. And see there is how they continually go up, they rarely go down. There is a. A decrease of foreclosure patterns in historic districts. And there's also it's it they tend to hold their value in up and down markets rather than go up or or down. So it does help the the building owner and all and all of that comes from a. A group called Workplace or Place Economics, because a lot of different.
I think in in your packet, I had, I think, listened to Abby. A response that linked to a twenty fifteen Economic Impact of Preservation in Texas report. And that's where a lot of this information is coming from about, you know, heritage tourism, about. Property values and things like that. So that's a really helpful resource. And and if I need to follow up and resend that, I can.
So just to put it in simple terms, in most of these places, sales tax goes up with the storefronts as the. Because tourism increases. And therefore, property values don't necessarily need to increase astronomically is what you're saying as far as revenue for municipality.
And correct. And it's not and and tourism will increase, but also just the general shopping from local community members. You know, they tend to, I mean, it it is a way where so so many of us send our kids off to college. We want them to come back. Cities that have historic districts, these kids tend to come back because there's opportunities for them to. There's coffee shop, you know, hotel, there's there's different types of, you know, entrepreneur, even like jobs in the creative sector. And, you know, that that are more readily available than they would have been in a downtown that is primarily vacant.
One last question. Can you walk us through the mural discussion? I'm guessing that that has. The local P and Z district is more the one that doesn't allow murals and. We're saying that it's very open on this.
We we love the Alpine as a mural city and we, you know, celebrate that, especially and I'm an art historian. And so that's a, it's an important part of our history too. I'm gonna let Ellis address this. This is because I I I want y'all to understand that there's no regulatory impact, but also how. They may perceive paint and murals.
Sure, yeah. So like Abby said. National Register designation is not going to say no murals at all. So that's really going to be up to the local level in terms of regulating that if you also choose. The caveat to that would again be if someone is seeking funding. And that doesn't mean that there's, you know, if someone's doing tax credits, that there's no murals allowed. But it would depend on, you know, was the building, is it stucco? Is it brick? Is it stone? That would affect that conversation on a per building basis. If they were seeking funding, but just getting this designation doesn't say no murals.
And there are also historic murals. If you think of, you know, Olin Moher or the lumber company, I mean, those are historic murals.
Definitely.
And those would be then. Part of that designation that'd be documented in that.
Just to kind of note some things here is, I think. Jim has even been the person that said this before, you know, forty plus buildings in downtown that are not occupied right now. I'm thinking, you know, how can we tie this? Because we're doing a solid to these building owners. We're saying you're going to be able to have, go get grants, you're going to be able to go get. You know. Other types of tax credits, ways to be able to pay, to be able to maintain, if not improve your buildings. How how can we tie something to this? To our building owners downtown to fill these buildings with businesses and to be able to create good jobs? If we're gonna do this, you know, if if we're gonna give out forty, forty five thousand dollars, whatever that is. How can we incentivize some of these businesses to be able to do something for the community in that way too? And I just want to pose that question. And I don't want to attach it directly, but I just want to say.
Complicated.
Sure.
Way beyond just this.
I I want a clarification. You say that the nonprofit. Buildings, they then in the district. They have to apply separately. I mean, they have to pay you to be included in the district or?
It depends on if they are in the district. It depends on if they are in the district that, um, that is carved out. Um, so if there's, you know, an, an outlined area that's not in the district, then we would have to seek additional, an addition, an additional nomination process. But majority of those are historically significant enough that would have an easy time qualifying. The reason for that historic district is because a lot of these like little buildings, they may not have a significant enough history that, that the Texas Historic Commission, whatever, though, okay, well, that's a historic building. We're going to save that one. But if you think of, you know, Coconut Lodge.
Catholic Church.
Catholic Church, the, the Centennial School, the Old School House. Those are all historically significant buildings that on their own have a fantastic story and the nomination process could be easy. That is what Historic Alpine is here to do.
So we can help them.
Pay for that.
Right.
Right. And other questions, uh, what about the, uh, any, uh, commercial buildings or historic houses? That don't want to be nationals? That would be forced to be part of the just?
So the can, the consent thing, um, the National Register Designation process will reach out to all building owners. Um, they'll receive letters and they'll have an opportunity to comment. Um, they can, uh, to decline, not decline, to oppose it, they send a notarized letter that says I oppose this action. However, um, if you have a majority of property owners within that district, the district is created. And that's only allowable because the National Register is non-regulatory. So that's different from your zoning overlay districts where you're dealing with, with more, um, you know, rules about owner consent. Um, in the case of National Register, because it's purely honorific. Um, you only need a majority of building owners to not object, um, in order to designate it.
Thank you.
And even if you are a business owner and your business is part of this district, that really doesn't mean anything unless you apply for.
That's right. That's right.
I mean, you can do whatever you want. You could paint your building purple and orange and pink. Or you could demolish your building. It doesn't.
Yeah.
It doesn't, unless if I want to apply for money so I can put in a new roof and a sprinkler system and just upgrade the front or even the inside, then I have to do.
That's right. So it's voluntary. You're, you're opting into regulation.
Yeah. So basically what we're doing is we're just giving the people in the district the opportunity to apply for money. If they don't have this, then that money is not available to them.
Sure. And I, yeah, and I'd love to address some of your comments, Councilman Stone, about, you know, the vacant buildings and bringing people in. So there's kind of two, it's, it's complicated question, right? But there's. Sure. There's kind of two mechanisms by which the, these incentives can be really helpful to that. One is it, you know, existing building owners and business owners see this. And they say, okay, now's the time for me to update my building or I've been operating this business out of a truck or out of a rented space. I want my own space. I'm going to buy that building and renovate it. The other thing is that, you know, I work with enough developers who are doing these types of rehabs. They are seeking buildings that are already designated. So, you know, if there are buildings that are open to, you know, some out of town developers coming in, this is an attractive incentive for them. Um, because it's already designated, it saves them time and money. Um, it makes this a smoother process if they are seeking tax benefits.
In, in that, it, I kind of touched this, but I just want to ask you to be sure you're here. Um, around beautification, you know, there's this area downtown. I've been in San Antonio, they got cobblestone streets, they got, you know, little stone archways and everything else. Can the city apply?
The city could do that.
So, but can the city apply for these Department of the Interior grants by noting that?
Yeah, I think that that, that would be a possibility.
A bunch of questions. I think one thing we didn't go over and that you mentioned is what an old building is. And I think you mentioned fifty years old. So I think that's important for us as a council when we look at that, anything fifty years or older is done. And then listening to your P and Z meeting, you said, the area, the overlay has to be at least fifty percent contributing property.
Right.
So, and thank you for forwarding a little information to me. I looked at, um, the Atlas Texas Historical Commission. So Martha did theirs. They did about two hundred and fifty buildings as well. Hundred and eighty-three were contributing, seventy-six non-contributing. So I'm going to assume we're probably going to be similar to that.
Yeah, yeah.
That in my mind is allowing you guys the flexibility if y'all want to extend that zone. Or even extend it south if y'all wanted to extend itself, because that's probably where more of the older home are. But that's, I, I'm for this and, um, go ahead. Abby, I was going to say, I, I like the discussion that we have.
Uh, and I, I do want to note that in two thousand and three, there was a, a previous survey on the Adobe Architecture South Side. Um, we are working with David Keller. We have, with, I previously served on playing and zoning. We had difficulty finding that, um, survey that we found it yesterday. So we are able to reference that and share that. Um, so that is very important. Um, even if it is a residential structure, but it is operating as a business. In a, um, you know, there's, it could be a, um, a store, an Airbnb, those types of structures would fall fine. If, if they want to.
For the credit. Yeah. Yeah. And so like I said, the boundary that's in here is not binding. Um, you know, I don't live here full time. So, so if there's places that we missed, if we should look farther south, then I'll take a look at that two thousand and three survey.
And on that, the one thing that worries me on it, because I, I, I am for this, that you can speak to the worry here. It would be like Frittichburg or a place like that where they do have their, you know, dolphite as a great historic area. But they also have huge short-term rental problems and areas where these tax credits could be taken advantage of, then you could take those properties and utilize those to create a short-term rental, uh, because. Saying that, I think it's good to talk about a scenario that we had talked about, calling them and them doing the, uh, the restoration on Holland Hotel. This is going to be most important for large capital projects that are, because forty-five percent of ten million is four point five million. Instead of forty-five thousand on a hundred thousand dollar, uh, restoration. So this is going to help get the big properties and the more expensive properties, um, restored. And I was going to say, if you could mention as well, what qualifies on the federal end? About the, the value.
Sure. Yeah. So, uh, you're right in that this tax credits are mostly used for bigger projects. But we've consulted on a number of, you know, itty-bitty, even as small as two thousand square foot, kind of Main Street type buildings in Elgin, Wichita Falls, Castleville, Paris, all of those which have downtown historic districts. Um, in terms of the size of project that works for the historic tax credit. The Texas credit, which was worth twenty-five percent of your rehab expenses is available if you spend as little as five thousand dollars. You can apply for that Texas credit. Um, and so we see a lot of smaller projects do just Texas. Or you can apply to it more than once. And so if you have a building owner who just kind of based on capital availability or leasing wants to do the exterior first and then lease space one first and lease space two first, they can get, um, treat those as separate Texas tax credit, uh, projects and get money. Each time. And that's going to help cash flow moving forward. For the federal, uh, which is an additional twenty percent. That is really intended for a full building rehabilitation. To qualify for the federal historic tax credit, you need to spend equivalent to the value of the building. So not the whole property, just the building. Um, and so really that's when we're looking at the Holland, you know, they are updating the whole interior or all of the exterior roofwork, all of that. They are spending more than, um, equivalent to the building. And so then they can tack on that federal credit as well.
And that brings me to my next point on that would be taking that scenario, Ben, if he's putting five million dollars into that property, just theoretically or whatnot. Then forty-five percent of that's going to be two point two five million as a tax rebate or a tax refund for that project. So that's phenomenal. And coming back to what you mentioned, Mr. Stone, that's not affecting our, uh, sales tax. That's not affecting our property tax. Only at the end, when the property is renovated, then we're getting more sales tax and more property tax, which would be a good thing. But, um, coming back to me, Megan, that comes back when we're setting a, um, incentive package and stuff for these businesses. In regard, we can't, I mean, we couldn't afford to do anything large. We could give them a hundred percent property abatement. Wouldn't, wouldn't be anywhere close to what this is actually offering on the larger scale projects. This is a huge carrot for the people that are, uh, that are kind of doing that. And it doesn't cost us anything from the local tax base, which I like. Um, what else was I going to mention here? The, how this is kind of a, uh, we're coming at it from a history, you know, perspective and everything. And I know that's where, uh, Abby's heart lies on a lot of things. The way Abby is, is much more from the economic development aspect from downtown and everything else. Do you, history is the vessel that we're actually be able to, uh, move capital into that area. Um, Marfa's was two hundred and fifty-five pages. Is that something that we're going to look at similar?
Yeah, probably. Um, and so it'll be available, it's, it's public record. Um, and so that'll be available on the Texas Historical Commission website as soon as it's certified. And then of course, we'll, we can provide drafts along the way.
And if you could speak to some of the projects that you've worked on in our area, or maybe even not you, but others.
Yeah. So my team's only six. So, you know, any project here I've had my hand in. Um, so obviously here in Alpine, I've mentioned the Holland Hotel and the Maverick. And for both of those, we're doing the National Register Designation and also handling the historic tax credits. And then with, uh, with that same, uh, team, we're also working on the Hotel Olympia, um, in Fort Davis. Um, we've been doing, uh, Texas-only tax credits for the Hotel Taisano in Marfa. Um, because he just, it really is just elevator. You know, so like I said, for Texas, you can do these small projects. So he's getting a Texas tax credit for replacing that elevator. Um, we've done a handful of larger projects in El Paso. Um, so if we're just looking generally in West Texas, um, including the Blue Flame Building, um, if you're familiar with that, the Texas Nat, or the El Paso Natural Gas Building. Um, and then elsewhere in West Texas, we're working on the Roosevelt Hotel in San Angelo. Um, that building's been vacant since the early nineteen eighties. Um, we did the National Register nomination on that and now we're working through, um, renovation of that into apartments, um, with one of our favorite clients.
Any idea how much that project would be total?
Oh, I think we're in the neighborhood of seven to ten million for the Roosevelt. Um, yeah.
And there's an individual one.
That's individual. Mm-hmm. And that's just their renovation. That's not, I'm not getting paid that much. But, uh, that's, that's what they're paying for that renovation. But that building is a shell. And like I said, it's been vacant since the early eighties. And so that involves building out all the plumbing, all the systems, new windows. They're restoring the historic rooftop sign, which is a big.
And that would end up being a three and a half to four million dollar rebate.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Um, one last thing then, the kind of talking about what Mr. Stevens had mentioned, some of it, and you had mentioned the other day. Once the zone is created, it's, you, we have to think about the boundaries before we actually move forward on any of it, because it's not easily available. Um, so I think that's important for, um, when y'all present everything else, you know, that there's feedback on all that. And then the, how, uh, instead of by creating that, the word that I had used was that we're unclogging the market on a lot of these projects, like you said, that aren't truly, it's a fifty-year-old building, but nothing historically significant happened in it, you know? They're within the district, so they're going to get, they're going to be allowed. And those would be the ones that smaller scale developers would be interested in. Because not everyone has five million to dump into the Holland, but then they have four hundred thousand, because the elegant project that you had mentioned.
Yeah.
For things like that. So.
Yeah. And we'd be happy to do a workshop on that for building owners, um, either in person or virtually, so that they can kind of understand what's on the table.
And this was the last thing that I would mention is that timeline. If this, and then also Megan on your end, if this was approved, the timeline starts in October? If it was paid with H O T, then?
H O T can cover it, but it can be approved two ways. It can be approved as the application that's being presented to the hot committee. Or it can be improved directly by council at an upcoming meeting and start sooner. Um, we do have the availability with the reserve, so there's two processes to.
So we could approve it and it would come out of this year or next year's.
We could approve it as early as the next meeting. Yeah.
So does Martha have a national historic district?
That's right. And theirs was reset, maybe twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen.
Can I just ask for clarification? Cause I know the term tax credit is thrown around and for the public's information. Can you kind of define what that tax credit is? Because I, I think some people think it's a property tax credit or sales tax credit. But it's really not. So I don't want the council as well as the public to.
Yeah. And it, it, it is. We know, we talk about tax credit, tax rebate, tax freeze and all this stuff. And they, they actually all mean really different things. Um, so when I'm talking about tax credits, there's two ones available, um, to property owners. So first is the Texas Historic Tax Credit, um, and that applies to the Texas Franchise Tax or Insurance Premium Tax. However, what is really important about the Texas credit is that it's freely transferable, because lots of folks don't owe those two taxes. Or nonprofits, of course, aren't paying taxes. And so at the end of a project, um, you will get a certificate from the Texas Comptroller that says you have earned a hundred thousand dollars of Texas Historic Tax Credits. And that is a piece of paper that can be sold. There is a really active market of investors, um, in the Texas Historic Tax Credit. And a good budgeting number is that they'll pay about ninety cents on the dollar for that Texas credit, sometimes more. Um, but because it's a credit, um, it's coming at the end of a project. Um, what we see happen for some of our projects is that some of the investors who are buying that Texas credit will bridge loan um, on that amount. So if they know they're going to get a hundred thousand dollars in two years, they'll give you fifty grand upfront. And so that helps with that construction, um, financing. So credit is, you know, a direct deduct or removal of, of tax burden owed, Texas credit freely transferable. The federal historic tax credit is worth twenty percent and that is on federal income taxes. Um, and that is claimed again at the end of the project. So after the building's been placed in service. Um, and it is claimed for at least five years following project completion. So, you know, if you've got a hundred thousand dollars in federal tax credits in year one, you get twenty thousand dollars of that. In year two, another twenty thousand dollars. Um, and depending on your federal income tax burden, you could spread that out over as much as twenty years. Um, and this is where I add the caveat that I'm not an accountant. But the credit is a dollar for dollar. You're going to get that credit at the end of the project. And then when you file your taxes, maybe it's erasing your tax bill or it's, it's, you know, subtracting, um, that amount from what you go.
And that would be why then the federal one is only for, for profits?
That's right. That's right. Cause it's on federal income tax and it's not transferable.
It's really, go, go ahead.
One more question. You mentioned that it would be like, uh, about two hundred and fifty properties that you will make survey on it. Uh, we have a lot in the south side and you said that you will contact the owners of, for these, uh, survey and to the district. Do you have a legal people that they can help?
We certainly can. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And we usually, um, also print all of our notifications in English and Spanish as well. Just so that we're not excluding anyone.
Okay, thank you.
Then, um, just being totally transparent, I'm mostly for this, I gotta say. I think it's a good thing. I'd really like to tie something to be able to incentivize bringing local businesses into these buildings. I'd love to talk to you more about that, Abby. Uh, but, uh, some of those ideas, I really think we need to be able to have a strong minimum wage in the community. I think we need to be able to have some incentives. Be able to get, uh, local businesses from, whether they're out of trucks or trailers or wherever they are, or, or people's homes to get them into these storefronts. And, uh, uh, I, I'll be the first to say the rent's too damn high. And the buildings are too expensive to buy right now. But, uh, with that, um, is there any cities that you've seen be able to attach something to this, uh, to be able to fill up some of your storefronts? Or is it just all, you know, free enterprise, free enterprise and?
I have seen a number of different approaches. Um, so for like a comparably sized community, I think Elgin provides a really effective example. Um, Elgin had some of the very first tax credit projects in Texas. The Texas Credits New started in twenty fifteen. Um, and they have just a really organized, uh, Main Street and downtown, um, group, yeah, who, uh, did greatest marketing for their buildings, talked about historic tax credits. And then added some small but meaningful local incentives that were tied to the historic district. So in Elgin, if you're in the historic district, there's facade grants that you can use for like paint and, and windows, there are signage grants. Um, and these might be a few hundred dollars, but it's meaningful to the property owner. Um, in Elgin, they'll offer you a free dumpster roll-off for a rehabilitation project. And again, not a huge one, but is, is meaningful. And they have a relaxed zoning in the Elgin Historic District that allows for more downtown housing and a bigger variety of uses. So I think they're a really good case study and it is a four-block-long downtown. So it's much smaller than that one here. And they've had, I think, seven historic tax credit projects there.
And, yeah.
Go ahead, Abby. I was going to ask one more question of Abby and hopefully I'm done. Um, and I got to be transparent here. And, uh, are there any buildings that you own that you could benefit from?
Personally, no. No, I, I have one home in Alpine. It's a small home. It's probably about twelve or feet.
We're trying to be transparent up here.
What were you going to say?
Bernie has an interesting approach. And, um, so they use their hot tax, their, their historic commission controls this and they have a matching program to where you can submit a grant if you want to install, you know, I saw that the Richie's also. We love the Richie. I saw that they have a, a project in here. So what Bernie would do is that they would do a matching donation. Like they, they would, if you're going to, if you're going to, uh, they're going to award you fifteen thousand dollars. It would be to match, you know, the fifteen thousand dollars that you are, um, investing.
Okay.
And so that's a nice, you know, it's a good idea.
Lower, yeah, these are all local.
I need to comment. Um, so as part of, as we move into the next fiscal year, the idea is to bring in an economic development manager. That would create an ordinance that provides all the different levels of types of incentives we can provide. Um, utilizing property tax, sales tax, hotel tax, you'd have a facade grant, you could have a signage grant, you could have you know, all the various different types of grants, but that would be under the local control, not with there's, there's. I feel like there's this, there's this phase one, and then phase two, because you, you're mentioning the economic development, how do we get people in? So the city could give back, start off small, we build up our economic development team, and then we get bigger and bigger, we go out for that sales tax um aspect of it. But the first step really is kind of, to me, is kind of get an idea of what do we want to focus on historically, what do we want to focus on for incentives? How do we, and kind of phase it all out?
Totally. I think y'all get where I'm at. I just don't wanna give huge carrots without, you know, getting some out of it too. But uh, I I think y'all understand, and I'll I'll just rest there, yeah.
And I'd also like this plan to tie into our comprehensive plan. So we've done a lot of studies, we've done a lot of, we've done the research in the first step. Now I'd like someone to come in and put it all together for us. So it doesn't matter who's where, we know that the city's moving this direction, and these are the things that we could do to move it. So I think it's a perfect conversation that we're having. Um, I just think this is another tool we put in our our box so that probably leads it down the road.
Last thing I was just gonna mention real quick was the thing I like about this too is it's all wrapped up with a bow. When we start talking about local ordinances and everything as far as uh incentives, and we may break down into fifteen percent versus twenty five percent property abatements and everything else. Everything's kind of tied up right here, where when they move forward, it's state and federal, so they're, from our view, it's, you know, not even a yes and no, because y'all can move forward without us. That's just a yes and no on H O T.
And we can guide them. You know, we say these are the local, these are your state, these are your.
I think one of the biggest challenges that Alpine's gotta wrestle with, that Elgin and Bernie do not. We are not thirty minutes away from major metropolitan area. That is the hugest economic issue for this area. Uh, and so, yeah, go through Austin, Elgin's thirty minutes, Bernie San Antonio, thirty minutes, peace gate. If there's any way you can provide some examples that aren't thirty minutes away. They'd be all ears. I continually hear great examples thirty minutes away. Never heard one two and a half hours.
I think we're unique.
If you can't get people here, because there is not an airport, you know, rail is interesting, but.
Always late.
You really wanna be an outmind. We have some more that we can say about that, which is me why all economic development so.
And I think it's important to, this is very, very bad Martha. You know, Martha does have a historic district. Marathon has a, has a historic, are they? Working on a historic district. And um, so I think it'd be interesting to bring some of the Martha talk about like, what has this done? You have this historic district since two thousand fifteen. But let's, let's look at it.
I agree. I talked to a lot of business owners. So the major investments, and I hope the Holland's very successful, wildly successful. I'm looking for the first positive cash flow, very simply, making money. And that's the challenge.
I'm curious as to why workshops weren't done first before this was brought to council. I mean, as to make the public and the community aware, especially like um the residents that will be affected. Um, well. Because I mean, y'all are talking about how it's gonna, how it'll improve the economy on businesses. Well, what about the residents that don't have a business? How is it gonna affect them?
Well, Historic Alpine has been having public workshops for the last few years. We did also have some in planning and zoning that was more just a one-on-one, like what are the differences between a local and a national historic district? Uh, we also invited all the property owners for a walking tour and brief informational, a brief information. We, Historic Alpine has been working on this plan, and when the fire happened um, a month ago, it, we, we, we were at that point, we cannot wait any longer. We've got to, we've got to implement, what if we lose the next block? Where are we? So that was the catalyst for getting this, you know, immediate, because it, I always knew that we needed to, Historic Alpine needed to raise this money to do this. Um, and then we realized that other cities have reached hot taps. But that's where we are, and there are, I mean, we plan to have many workshops for everyone. Many more workshops.
Just for clarification, the national registry won't affect personal, they can either be part, they can make sure they demolish their house the night they they could remodel, they could do what they want. It's the local historic district that could put in specific ordinances that would have um a little control over what they can and can't do. Yeah, we're not at that one, or we're not there yet. This would help move into that direction to make that determination. If a building is adobe, they have to remodel with the dope. That kind of problem, but that would be on your level, not the national. My guess is, correct me if I'm wrong.
As far as how it affects individuals, if the businesses are up and going and successful, there's gonna be more employment opportunities. Salary should go up as the businesses are more successful. But that's how it affects individuals, but the national registry does not include homes, correct?
Yeah, what we're focused on in this proposal is is doing this kind of downtown area. If in the future, the city decides that they would like to have a residential historic district, that's possible. Well, I mean, we can do, you can do a national register district that's residential as well. You know, we're focused in this proposal on doing the downtown, that's the easy ask, and that's also the one that's gonna have the biggest economic impact, right? Because of the for-profit businesses that can take advantage of incentives. Um, but if there's a desire for the city to have a national register district that covers residential, that's something that could happen later, and then that gives the neighborhood an opportunity to have that established history.
And it would give the individual homeowners credit.
That's right, if, yeah, if if they were qualified, they qualify, yeah.
So this survey doesn't affect.
That's right.
I had taken the action that the hot committee to bring it back to council when we're ready, I'll have to work that, if this council makes sense.
Would we be ready July sixteenth?
I can, I can write it, that's not a problem. It's just I gotta have it on the agenda tomorrow.
Right, so do we want to ask G O to put it on the agenda?
Well, we gotta write the resolution and all that to go with it. So there's a lot of work that's gotta occur in my senses. July sixteen is pretty mature, it's called.
And I don't, my personal opinion is, we've been fine up until now. I think it's a good idea. I am for it. I would be perfectly fine if it was spin out of next year's uh H O T. I'm for it, and I just don't, I don't think it needs to be done yesterday, uh, but my position is I am for it.
I'd like one more time to be able to say the rent three damn night. Whatever.
I think as a discussion item, um, it could be moved into an act item if Mr. Stevens, Councilman Stevens would like to, and then we can bring it.
So a discussion item for July sixteenth? Good, anything else?
Okay, thank you, ladies, thank you all your time.
Yes, you're my second requester. Can you make it? All right, so with that, we're gonna take a short break.
Especially.
Doing it locally, you get into some really different things. I think this will.
Even put in half million.
They don't have school, even when we did the school. That people have no idea the cost of construction out here.
Well, that was the issue now. You know, during that edition, and I know, because I've been in construction, I hope, I know it can be. I think we overdid the school. Discussion, though, how to go over it. I could have brought D C's in. In my view, the school district should have not had the G C and the architect be saying, that's what you asked. And I told, I told, I I pulled a national architect who I've worked with around the world. So the school should have never spent two million dollars. Most a million. Everyone on the board says Ricky. Is a quarter billion dollars.
So, so here's my question. I don't mind the survey. My, my, my thing is, I don't want it to. Okay, then I keep before I get more. Put on the paper, or I don't know, however it needs to be.
All right. City Secretary. And we're recording. Okay. All right, and we're ready to get started. You would please take your seats. All right, and we're back in session. So we just finished the discussion. Item A, moving on to discussion. Item B, Councilmember Nance, if you would read out the item and begin the discussion.
All right, let me find where I'm at here. All right. So. This is to discuss the state statute. Am I making the motion, I guess, or?
No, it's just a discussion.
Gotcha. So just a discussion on the state statute requirement that the city of Alpine spent fifty percent of the hotel occupancy tax, H O T. On advertising and discuss the possibility of working with state representatives to consider proposed legislation to remove the requirement.
Okay, start us.
So basically, I just wanted to present that to council and kind of get their opinion on this because. Next, I guess this legislation start in January. I can't, I don't know when it started. So it's coming up, so that way we could get everything, our ideas to our state representatives if we wanted to make any changes to this, we could get ready. Couple of things on that is, because if we don't do it now, we would be waiting another two years. Currently, we are at our limits of fifty percent and H O T tax or H O T funds need to be spent on advertising, fifteen percent on historic. No more than fifteen percent on historic, no more than fifteen percent on promotion of the arts. So. I did reach out to Justin Brugel and he said some of the carve outs that some of the other cities in Texas have kind of looked at. Ones I didn't know about, Marfa actually has a carve out for their, where they can use H O T money on their airport. Which I thought was kind of interesting. There's a carve out for a lot of places along the coast for marinas or beach areas for cleaning those kinds of things. Because tourism go to those areas. Central Texas, Wimberly, some of those other areas had. Language and carve outs for spending H O T money on dark skies, dark sky compliant. Retro bits, I guess, and construction of things. So there were options out there. And before we, I guess, the two part question is, one, is does council have an appetite to remove fifty percent restriction? That's currently in there. And does council, second question, does council have an appetite to put any other ideas towards our. Local representatives to to kind of put in place.
So we are the only city in the state of Texas, correct, that's required to spend fifty percent on advertising?
What's Marpa's difference there? They're going to get something changed to right now.
So. Legislation has dictates these, what he calls carve outs. So there is specific legislation that requires the city of Alpine must spend at least fifty percent of their hotel occupant tax. On advertising and promotion, um then a maximum of fifteen percent of its hotel occupant tax on revenue or. On promotion of the arts and then a maximum of fifteen percent on the historical rest restoration. Marfa currently doesn't have these same guidelines, but they're not a home role city either. So they do still have some guidelines based on the type of uh city they are. Marfa is currently working with their or or, I don't know, is it Blanco? Um specifically to open up that category for utilities. And so I did reach out to Mandy and say, hey, can we join that bandwagon? Um because it seems like Cesar Blanco wants as many cities to be as part of it. Um but currently we're restricted. So even if we were to be able to open it up for utilities, we still have to utilize fifty percent for advertising. So the idea is to go and have legislation hopefully change it where we still have the same capabilities of all the other home role cities. So we can open up that funding. Airport would have to be legislative approved. Utilities could be a legislation approval. Dark Sky initiatives, there are specific legislations that allow the use of hot funds for that. So cities are now trying to to utilize these funds for other things that attract tourism. Um our airport got the fact tourism, we have hunters come in all the time. Um and then that's, that's a big thing for us. But we're still tied to the fifty percent. So even if we were to try to go after a change, that fifty percent would restrict us. So the idea is to see if we can't get that removed. And Chris Brugia, our director of tourism, did provide a letter. I mean, it is challenging because we may budget, you know. Six hundred thousand for the year, but then in July, we'll kind of have that forecast with, okay, well, we're gonna bring in seven. He's got to scramble to spend that extra fifty thousand dollars um towards advertising. So it's a big campaign that has to come up or it's a bunch of little ones. So the idea is to put us on the same playing field as all the other cities. And then also join that bandwagon with like Martha. Um the hotels are kind of our large consumers for utilities. And so being able to do some of that replacement with that or have some money put aside for dark sky initiatives. I mean, we are a part of the largest dark sky um in this area. So there's lots of. Yes. And so there's options, but we'd want to get a resolution before council, which we do have a uh proposed one already. That Geo worked on, get the council to approve it so that we could move forward with our senators, our state representatives. To get it before legislation to hopefully get it approved. Yes, we're the only city that's required. Fifty percent. Oh, my city.
And I'm just going to mention that we did ask Chris's opinion of that. I did not ask his opinion of anything else. I wouldn't put words in his mouth on any of the other.
Well, he did put in possibility of funding night sky friendly initiatives. He did put that in his letter, which is included in. Oh, golf course, we're trying to see how we could golf does bring in some tourism because they do have tournaments here. How could we utilize some of those funds to help? So there's all these options, but we're restricted because of that fifty percent. So we don't have the availability to open it up more. So we kind of want to go back before legislation. I think the city has changed the pattern from when this was put into place. Um it was concerned from the hoteliers that we weren't properly bringing in tourism and advertising for the hotels. And we've definitely changed that uh marketing plan that that process.
Stevens. So three things. So you just answered the first question. There was a couple of tellers that. Because of. Lack of proper research possibly from council. Second is. What would be the mechanism moving forward? Who would go see Cesar or?
So the idea is to get the resolution in place. The Texas um Hotel Lodging Association would help us as part of lobbying. T M L wouldn't because it's too focused. Um they would want something water. Um Eddie and Cesar and. Even Gonzalez all sent out an email saying, is there anything we can help you with? So then I've already got that contact information, so I could forward it up with them. It's working back with the city of Martha's. Especially if we want to look at utilities, get our name in that hat as well. Um so ideally, once you guys approve it, I can move forward with getting it to the designated.
Okay, so. I want to handle the second by second point before we get to third point. You covered it all there. Second point. In my opinion, there are so many legislative activities that occur at the state level. This will get lost. If we want to get the fifty percent removed. Therefore, I do believe we need direct contact with either at the senate level or the house level. So my view is, I'm perfectly comfortable going off and do this, but we got to make direct contact. The only question is, what's the best way to do it? Because I got no problem. Here's what we'd like to go do. Because I think we'll get lost in the shuffle with the rest of everyone else doing this thing.
And I can provide you all the contact information to each one of you, but each one of you could reach out to show that this is important.
And I'll be an Austin, so I can put on a different hat during the legislature and sit there too.
But we had, I think everyone was gonna work. Someone to go sponsor through. Third item is, it's not clear to me that we want to get on the bandwagon for the rest of the stock. I would just make an observation that when COVID hit in many areas. There were a ton of municipalities that relied so much on hotel occupancy tax funds. When the tax legis, when the tax funds collapsed, they laid off a ton of people. So I would just caution us to think about. How diverse we want to be about where we can spend our money, because there will be a push. Unless you're biased by future councils to say, let's go take all that money and use it for this, 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 and this. And then if we ever had a COVID event again. We're gonna start shutting things, some things down. So while it's been in a bad forest, to spend fifty percent on uh advertising. I don't think we want to expand beyond until we get a really good sense about where we want to spend money. So that's, that's my bias. I'm not sure we council or future councils have the discipline to be fiscally accountable. So it's got us in trouble twenty years ago.
So I I agree with you a hundred percent. And I've talked to Council Nance and I've talked to to you as well when we look at the resolution. It shouldn't be a resolution with everything we want. We need to specifically address the fifty percent separate. Because we don't want to combine it with something else and it fail. Because then we're, we're not even targeting what we're originally wanting to go after. The fact that there's other options out there are always, you know, nice to have. But the primary of the resolution is to reduce or remove that fifty percent.
And we should just focus on that.
Does it not, i- if we just focus on the fifty percent, then we can spend it however we we want it, is that?
So it would open up all the categories more so that we're not restricted. So then when we do our grants and we look at how we award it, we could open it up every year specifically to help tourist events.
Okay.
Only one that would not qualify. And I know legislation last year, because I I prayed really hard. Um had three bills on the docket specifically addressing hotel occupancy tax with utilities and none of them.
And Jeff Davis County was the one that I think got one of those. I could be wrong, but I think they were the ones that got. The fifty percent at least dropped because that was in place when I was there and then.
They got something specific, but like we have very specific.
Yeah.
A lot of legislation.
Oh, yeah.
Targets a very specific area.
McDonald Observatory was in the legislation. It was like you have to have an observatory in your county with less than three thousand people. That's how they. Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah. So with that, I I mean, just to look at the funds that we have left over from last year. I I think it was like three hundred thousand dollars that we were, we were talking about here. That's like kind of just a rolling savings account. Or can you help me out there?
So what it's called is fun balance.
Okay.
So and the fun balance is, it can be spent by council, but you also want to make sure if we ever have. Another episode where we have zero income coming in, that you can still support your current tourism and your staff. For a certain number of days, typically a hundred eighty.
Sure.
Um so we don't encourage the use of all the fun balance.
Sure.
This year, we're actually budgeted three hundred and eighty nine thousand of it for um improvements. And so we utilize it to make up the difference. So it it does roll. Every year it's gonna fluctuate. That's where you'll hear though, we have a million in reserve or we have a million in fun balance. That's that rolling stock of of. Over, um we've brought in more money than we.
So it was, oh, it was over the fifty percent that we didn't have to spend and we got to put it in this, this account.
So we always try to meet that fifty percent for advertising because of the state statute. But then we understand the other categories.
Yeah.
Or, you know, um the staffing at the visitor center, we budget for so much, but we don't spend as much or the facility maintenance. So there's the categories that we understand are what have created that fun balance that has not been there. So that fun balance has really been created over the past seven years.
And at the same time, they are, we will not be able to spend it on, and correct me if I'm wrong, on infrastructure or anything else. As it is now.
As of today, no, you cannot use it.
And so what are things like that we spend it on right now? Just trying to.
So the city's unique. Um we spend it on uh events. So that's where we have the budget comes in and you have the hot committee and they look at all the events. Does it attract tourism? Does it put the heads in bed? What category does it fit? So we award these events, you know, you have art walking, spirits of the west, you have a Viva Big Bend. Um all of these different events, we award them for advertising, which we pay directly for the most part. Um we don't give money and let them spend it. We reimburse them for what they've already spent to make sure it falls within our category.
And a clarification on the art, up to fifteen percent is what I heard. Uh and on that, would a uh art event, obviously, that would be an event. And that, and that can go beyond that fifteen percent. What, can you give me a little bit more history on what art is?
So. This last, um when we had Justin come in, he's the attorney for the Texas Hotel Lodging Association. We actually don't quite agree with him.
Okay.
Um so typically what the city has used for art are murals.
Yeah.
And musicians. So those are the two big categories. I know that there was conversations brought up as far as having like a, where we bring in artists and then we move them around town. Um Justin didn't uh feel that that fell under the art category. That that would fall under one of the other categories or it could be split between. So we didn't quite agree.
Could be like events.
So, but if they had the event and say we're bringing in an artist to do a mural, it would obviously the mural would be covered. The murals we've become a little bit more specific with because we do have murals that the city paid for that are not on city facilities or own buildings.
Sure.
But technically, the city owns the mural.
Yeah.
Um so there's always been a little bit of controversy with the murals.
Okay, and so and just diving a tiny bit deeper into that, I know that there's, uh I don't know. I'm guessing that there's a few proposals from event uh organizations in town. Um as well as a project that I'm thinking specifically from an event organization in town. Do those fall under events or how are we? How much are we going to be able to put into art? And you can tell me from this fiscal year and what you're thinking about in future months.
So we actually, based on, so Chris and I discussed kind of like what we were gonna budget, because we have to go off of a budget. So utilizing roughly the same budget that we used last year, we automatically know that fifty percent um goes towards. The advertisers. So what's remaining, sorry, it's after five, but I don't do math in my head.
Okay.
Um would be roughly thirty thousand towards art.
Okay.
Because there was a fifteen percent cap.
Okay.
So whatever, so say we had a four hundred thousand dollar budget, we automatically know two hundred thousand has to go towards advertising. Out of that two hundred thousand that's left, thirty thousand, which is fifteen percent, would be utilized for art.
Two more quick questions. Of that thirty thousand dollars for art, if. And it was also music that we were talking about. An organization that's having an event and paying artists and or musicians, is that going into the bucket that is for events and not with the art?
So that would go into the art. So when you, that's what the applications are designed to break down and specifically what categories they want. So say I'm gonna have Megan's Magnificent Musical Festival.
Yep.
And I'm gonna hire artists and I'm gonna hire belly dancers and I'm gonna hire musicians.
Okay.
My budget say is five thousand. Five thousand is what I want for art and then maybe I want another ten thousand for advertising.
Got you.
So their budget is supposed to kind of be broken down because if my event and I ask for all thirty thousand under art. May not really qualify all under art, but then it's also a determination based on the hot committee with, okay. We only have thirty. We don't want just one event to have it all.
Okay.
So we we break it down so that we kind of go across all the categories.
Last question right now, uh is. Is there ever been a time or is there the ability for council and or the city manager to open back up? Hot fund grants halfway through the year?
So it has been discussed and currently we've done it twice.
Okay.
Um in my tenure with the city, um council always has the ability because it is after discretion to spend the funds.
Sure.
The hot committee makes the recommendation. It's not an end all be all. It's just what's being recommended. Um I know that we had one of the rodeos come in last minute, wanting some assistance. And so it was brought before council and said, hey, we'd like to open this up so we can give them some money. We focus on the application process because it helps to streamline, what are we looking at for the next year? You don't want constantly having it open because then you're gonna, you're gonna go into your fun balance. You're gonna may overspend.
Sure.
So it is always an option for council to come and bring it back up. And usually Chris Brugia will come in and say, hey, there's this event.
Yeah.
We really want to help it. Let's bring it before.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So to give you a little bit more detail, there are twenty six applications submitted requesting six hundred and fifty thousand dollars against a budget of about four hundred thousand.
Gotcha.
So that's what I talked about earlier. The hot committee worked to clarify and say which ones met the qualifications.
Got you.
Two were pulled out and then they've been going through and evaluating that with scoring system all the way through. And they add up to a certain number. They'll come out in the next meeting, July eleventh, and finalize the recommendations. It will come back to council.
Thank you.
So I think based on the conversation, everyone's pretty much kind of in grains with if we were to put the resolution before the council to have another discussion and.
I would like to make just another comment on it, um that the. One thing I just wanted to mention, somewhat kind of the difference between us and the county. I know we're not commissioners, but the uh. We were pulling in, I think y'all said about six fifty in H O T from the cities.
It just, we don't know until July.
Gotcha. And then looking at Big Ben, is it Big Ben or the county's H O T budget? That's one point three million. They're dealing with a lot more money on the H O T and I'm just kind of interested if. Legislation was done or maybe they're not going to tie into our legislation or anything else like that, but maybe just to let them know that we would be going in case they wanted to. Do anything with their H O T funds. One last thing I was gonna say too, when we talked about some of these carve outs that are done at the legislative level. And I do understand the concern about tying that up, you know, we're uh losing the flexibility of it. Because we're saying we can open it up to the golf course and we can go open it up to dark skies. Looking at what Justin had sent, because for that to actually get up to the legislative level and pass. The hotel uh lobbyists covered everything possible uh in the language. And just to kind of to show you guys, here's one for Odessa and the language was. If Odessa or Victoria, Victoria, Texas spends hotel occupancy tax revenues on a sports facility. The city must determine the amount of area hotel revenue generated by hotel activity from sports events held at the hotel occupancy tax funded facility. For seven years after the city initially expands hotel occupancy tax revenue. So what they're basically doing by that language, I think, if you were gonna take, take it into like the the golf course. We would say the golf course is having an event and we are thinking that they're gonna bring in a thousand dollars of, well, let's just say. You know, if a hundred dollars a room, ten people are gonna get rooms that weekend. Uh and go to the golf tournament and that's gonna bring a thousand dollars of H O, H O area hotel revenue. And at the seven percent tax, that would be seventy dollars. So seventy dollars extrapolated over seven years, then we're looking at four hundred and ninety. So they're setting those caps within how much the the golf course or dark skies or whoever. It's onerous on them to come in and say, we've actually disaggregated the data and we know who's local playing golf and who's not local playing golf. And we know it's on this weekend. We're using rational data to come back and say, we can't request over five thousand dollars. It's nothing. So I think the hotel uh lodging or hotel lobby has done a really great job of putting shackles on all these um. Uh carve outs within that. Saying that, I would be interested in. Having a conversation in the future, maybe on some of these. I think priority number one is exactly what you guys said, remove fifty percent. And that is, I'm full steam ahead on that. I would just like to do a little more research on this and maybe talk to Justin at the uh Texas lobbying. Our hotel lobby and say, what are some of our options so we could come back and present that to council to see if any of that does make sense?
So just tied to that, our biggest collector of hotel occupancy tax funds is Presh Yadi. Presh has been participating in the hot committee meetings. So he's been our voice in my mind to be able to come back and says, that makes sense. So if we ever run into an issue with the lobbyists on the hotel side, we got pressure on our side. So I think that's an important part of the discussion as well. Let's make sure we got our hoteliers on side before we go back to the lobby.
And he'll be an important voice for the legislature as well.
No question.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And the way I'm seeing this is honestly, we're either gonna spend fifty thousand dollars more on Facebook ads. I mean, that's the easiest way to spend advertising money. So we're gonna give it to some national corporation. Or we're gonna open up grants again and give it to community members that can do something for our town. And this is one of the few buckets that we can invest in people in our community to bring people here. Um and that's honestly why I think maybe even the way that we're doing this is the right way to do rather than to start taking this money out and putting it in other pots that. Maybe that money doesn't deserve to go in those pots, but that's what I got.
Anything else?
So this would come back to our next agenda?
Yeah, we already have it. Yeah, we already have it.
Right.
Thank you.
One thing I would say is July sixteenth, I won't be hearing.
We know. I know. On Zoom?
But I I I trust you guys, I mean, I I'm happy that this whole thing's moving forward.
Okay, moving on to information or discussion item D, city manager. So I just wanted to bring a a quick update to the council as I work through the capital improvement plan and the budget and some of the things that um that I'm coming across and changing, updating. Working back with the departments and understanding. Over the past couple of years, I've done a lot of research and and training on ideally the capital improvement plan. What are capital improvement plans? What are capital improvement projects? What is a capital asset? Um, going from twenty twenty or twenty thirteen when I started here to now. We've changed the format significantly. What you have in the packet is our, what was approved last year. Um, we have completed some of these. Um, you'll see some of them, um, we should have been putting money aside, um, we maybe not have a lot of information. So what I am doing is I'm going through and I'm once again kind of doing another upgrade with the current format. To really present to council, what is an actual capital improvement plan or project? And it really needs to consist of the major non-routine expenditures. These are the big infrastructure projects. This is the rebuilding of a park like Pablo Nueva. This is not. A stage. This is not a a a piece of equipment. Um, these are actual long-term projects that require design fees, legal fee, land fees, operating equipment, furniture, construction. An actual long-term plan. A lot of what we've done with our um directors and our employees is, you know, the list of wish lists. You know, I want a new. Juice here, so I'm gonna say I want tasers for my department. That's an operating expense. That really shouldn't be a capital improvement project. So what you have currently in the packet is what we've drafted. I'd like to go through an update, provide some additional information. Break it down a little bit differently and then actually present um the capital improvement plan to the council. Um, I do ask, um, or I wanted to bring it to your attention that it won't meet the deadline because tomorrow is the deadline for the packet. Um, which I won't have it all completely finished. Um, but talking with all the departments and having the understanding, your big plans that you'll start seeing coming forward are your infrastructure plans. You know, it's going in and redoing sections of the city, your wastewater treatment plant, that is a capital improvement of project or plan. Um, really explaining when we're, and this ties to the budget, which is really important to me, um. It's understanding that these are things that we either go out for debt. We actively start putting money aside and build up that reserve account of rainy day fund in some people's uh terminology for these projects. And you'll start seeing within the budget, um, prime example is for this fiscal year and coming up, the budget. We'll have a loader for the street department. It won't be a capital improvement project. It will be an actual operating expense. But we start putting that in place, so every year we start seeing those assets becoming operating expenses. And not something that we need to plan for over a length of time. But I did wanna bring it before council because I wanted you to be aware of kind of everything that we have going on with the city. And things that people are requesting. Um, prime example is the animal shelter repairs and maintenance. That shouldn't be something we plan for. Regular maintenance should be done as an operating expense. We just haven't quite budgeted and planned for it accordingly. So it's sitting down with all of the directors and and re um formatting and changing things. So I just really wanted to give you the first thought. Um, we're not adding any big projects, um, except for a view, so. The gas department has two big infrastructure projects that they'd like to put into the plan if if we can't get it within the operating budget. Of course, the the big one is the feasibility studies for the water. And understanding where are we at with the water department and you know, what do we need to plan for? We've talked about the feasibility study of tying the heats in the. The west side, we're looking at the project with the sunny green well filled. Um, a dump truck, that's an operating expense, that's something we can purchase. Um, if we obviously uh budget uh correctly. I just wanted to kind of get some of your feedback, what you were thinking, some of the things that we are gonna remove, um, is the paving equipment package. Um, we will remove that because we've had several discussions with uh doing the steel coating. Um, project, which means they need a loader, but they need the equipment now to move forward with that. Um, I did talk to Eddie in regards to some of his, um, like the employee lounge, the fleet maintenance area. Those are, those are things we really need to have someone kind of not, I mean engineer, plan, have a construction plan in place, um. Not something we really need to do in-house and put a, you know, a structure that may or may not be um useful. Like a boatamore, that's just an asset we need to purchase. So I just wanted to get your feedback. I know that there's. Been some changes over the past couple of years. Some of you guys are new on council, so you haven't seen that change over, um. I'm open for thoughts, ideas, suggestions.
I think that that makes perfect sense. Capital improvement plan would be projects that you're planning on completing. Instead of just the individual. Pieces of equipment that we see listed in our C I P, we've seen listed in our C I P for quite some time now.
I I do believe that dump truck has been the C I P for ten years.
Right, yeah, so I think that that makes perfect sense, um, that a capital improvement plan should be projects. Things that council wants to do to work on.
So to me, that's a new city hall. That's a capital improvement project. Right, okay.
So 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 one, I will tell you, I did not read it.
It's okay.
Cause I knew what was in it.
Yeah, it's the same thing that's been there forever.
It's been there forever. So that's interesting. We're all gonna use it. So I'm glad you're making some changes. Ask that when you go through the revamp it, can you at least give us? A page or two back to the mayor's point, your major projects. Here is the funding by year, so we can see that on a page or two.
So I'm glad you brought that up because that part isn't included, that's what I've been working on. Um, so it would be a summary and it also explains kind of the process.
Right.
Um, it would have the breakdown of the funding, the funding sources. I know a lot of times. But I honestly, I I see this as a to-do, not a anything else. It's like, it's off my checklist.
You would.
I want us to actually start implementing it to move the city forward.
Right.
That's my red skater.
I mean, I'm with, I'm with uh with Megan on what you're thinking. I I I actually wrote this, I think, four times last night. Even though I knew it before. I kind of went over it and I thought, well, maybe I'm missing something, but some of it has been there.
Forever.
Too long. Then I thought, well, maybe I just seem wrong and I'm like. This, it, yeah, we just need to move.
And you, what you'll notice, the stuff that's been completed is really just operating items.
Yeah.
And so I really, I'd like to turn this into a full-blown capital improvement plan. With the understanding that you'll start seeing the asset purchases within the actual operating.
Right.
And that would be hard to swallow because that budget will look a little different.
It seems to make sense.
Just have one question for you, Megan. So will, this will be redone and this would dovetail nicely after the fact of having a comprehensive plan?
This would actually tie beautifully into a comprehensive plan. Because that comprehensive plan should come out with some projects, especially for um expansion, utilities, development. Um, and we could pull that into, you know, like the old infrastructure location. And if we're tying that into how we're gonna develop the south side, the west side, the east side. So yes, they go hand in hand. It becomes your to-do list.
Off of your plate.
That's my role of us.
Oh, no, the projects that they are here, they're all new to me, but one it got my attention. He comes with this splash pack.
So let me give you some history on that.
Okay.
So the city council designated fifty thousand dollars out of um. An old, I don't know, um, out of money that we had set aside for the creek project. We moved part of it into the generator project, which we're still pending with FEMA. And we left fifty thousand for the splash pack. The fifty thousand was kind of the initiative for the Big Ben parks, friends of the Big Ben parks.
Kids, kids is a man.
Big Ben Parks Corporation.
Right.
Um, to fundraise the remaining portion to actually establish the splash pad. I don't believe they're.
They're not active right now.
Yeah, they're a little.
TK moved.
I mean, idea of the splash pack would be to put it, of course, in Coconut Park um around where the pool.
Would mention too, I think Mark is moving forward with splash pad. There will be one in the area.
And we had people look at it in the engineering and do the resource, research to look at how the water could be recycled. So it wasn't gonna have a huge impact on our water system. The benefits of not having to have all the lifeguards because it would be an un-life guard uh facility. There's some. It's in here because the city did delegate that money specifically for the project. And you do have an outside organize, organization working towards it. And I don't know if I answered your question, but I wanted to give you some background. I don't think she asked her question.
Well, and well, no, I want that clarification, because you know why? Because all this is water about and again. Marina Park has some baby water for a long time. You said there's something that needed to be bought and I don't know if the city can buy that.
Oh, this splash pad is not within the next probably.
I know, but but that piece it need to be replaced or to be able to water. That.
The park's park is working on that.
Yes.
It's the back of that.
Okay.
It's broken.
Okay.
And they have to have a plumber actually.
Okay, yeah, that was what, that was like, oh, so much water here, but not water from Medina, so.
They 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 do get my daily reminders.
Okay, thank you.
Um, love, love all this. I'm looking at it, obviously, uh. As being a newer person, I wish we could just get one of the splash pads, you know, just the, just the top barrel one and we can all stand under there. We don't need three hundred thousand dollars. I feel like we got fifty for it. We can get one of them, you know, and and. Put it there right now and I, kids like me, we go out and hang out, you know, riding my bike over there and so forth. I can't ride over to Marpa yet. I'm not, I'm not as good of a bicycle as you, but um. I I love all this and I look forward to continuing the discussion and the comprehensive plan. One thing that stands out to me, uh, and you know, y'all are all gonna go, oh. But uh is um the um A P D tasers. I wanna support our boys in blue to a hundred percent. Also wanna be able to incentivize some non-lethal uh ways, because if a person pulls out a gun, they're gonna pull out a gun. I don't know what the taser is used for then, is there's just like a strong middle ground here that, you know, maybe uh pepper spray or something else. And maybe, maybe LaSoya knows that he carries that on him too, but uh, you know, I. These are, you know, I think we have a lot of data showing that tasers, especially with our population that might not be the healthiest in the world. Uh, are not necessarily non-lethal and I'm worried about this. I just wanna put that on the table, but I appreciate all the work you do, Megan. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Okay, so that moves us into action items. The first action item belongs to the city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero seven dash zero one. And ordinance authorizing the vacation abandonment and sale of unimproved portion of South Fifth Street. Lying between lot five, block one and lot ten, block two. Of Ferguson Second Edition, the city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, the Portercultural Consulting LLC. Authorizing the city manager to execute a deed without warranty. Directing that funds from the cell city entrant to deposit it into the general fund for the purpose of street improvements. Providing for terms and conditions of such thereof.
I need a motion. I need a second.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, discussion, city manager, lead the way.
Um, I would like to ask council to possibly postpone this till the August sixth, or August sixth. August sixth meeting, so that we can do a full utility review. In discussion yesterday with the uh interim director and councillor Nance. We did notice that there are water lines and sewer lines and some unknown information in that area of this property. And we do have Mr. Marcus here with us tonight, it then to provide some additional insight, but we know for sure there's a water meter on one side. We know there's a sewer manhole on the other side and we haven't quite been able to locate how the house at the top. Where those service lines are coming from. So we'd like to make sure before this property gets sold. That one, we have the access to all the utilities that we need to have access to and two, we can identify all of them there.
Okay, so I see that the gas department has confirmed that there are no utilities. So the question is for the water department.
We do have water service line there, meter, where the existing house was and a sewer tab. I can't find the sewer tab. Coming from that existing house that was uh demolished, I don't even know it was demolished. And uh, that's on the east side of South Fifth. And on the west side of Fifth, there is a sewer manhole. It's going down south to north. And so the abandoned, that that house that was demolished, there is a service line going to that sewer line. And you have one, two, three more going lateral through the sewer. And one, two more on the west side going into the sewer line. But I know there's a house up in the very top. South and uh, I just can't remember where the water's coming from.
So I'd like to amend the motion to move this to the August sixth meeting to give the city the opportunity to understand utility and eastern apartments.
Any discussion on the amendment? Any questions for Mr. Markas?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Yes, it does not go without notice. Council does notice.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, um, let's vote on the amendment to move this to the August sixth meeting so that. Our utilities department will have the opportunity to to better understand this, but. Okay, so city secretary, the amendment to postpone this until August sixth is passed, let's dispose of the original motion.
Alright.
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 Okay, and the original motion has been disposed of. Excellent. Alright, moving on to action item, the city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero seven dash zero two. In ordinance approving rezon application twenty twenty four dash zero six dash zero one. Amending the official zoning map of the city by rezoning the property located at. One zero zero three East Gallego and legally described as point five acres more or less. Line in Brewster County, Texas, lot ten with west one half of lot nine, two, and with west one half. Of lot three, except the north twenty areas of lot one. Two and west one third of three in block thirty-three Hancock Edition, south of the railroad. According to the map flat on the set edition filed in flat envelope number one, one, two. Brewster County Flat Records rezoning the subject property from our core mobile home district to C one neighborhood commercial.
I need a motion.
On move, we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four oh seven oh two as presented.
I need a second. I see. Okay, discussion, city manager.
So this application came to us from Mr. Hopper requesting to rezone the property that he currently owns to establish a laundry mat. This property is located between what is now the food pantry and the former Shopperella bar. The planning and zoning commission did meet on Monday, the twenty fourth to consider this application and they did approve it.
And we have ours, we have a member, our chair, our secondary chair, vice chair. Here, if there are any questions, would you like to come out and introduce yourself? Joanna. Thank you for being here too.
Joanna Blackston, Ward five, planning and zoning, vice chair.
My question is, is this considered spot zoning?
No, it is not.
We didn't consider it spot zoning because we really looked at the placement of where the food pantry is and then. The area right to it and there's nothing there and it actually made sense to us to put a washetiere on that side of the city for change. Rather than making them drive all the way over on the other side. There was some discussion. About the water over in the area and basically, um, what. Was pretty much decided was it's gonna, it's on the same line and he can answer this better than I can. It was on the same line or it's within the same area. It was on the same line or it's within the same area of, I guess, water flow. And that it's gonna actually eliminate some of the flow from, that you have anyway, from the other laundromat. So why not, you know, add this over on the other side of the railroad tracks and make it convenient for the rest of the citizens? It just made sense to me.
Councilmember Stevens.
So, uh, I've been looking at that area for another reason to understand. So it's currently zoned R four or C one A?
No, it's currently zoned R four, which made me scratch my head too. And because it really kind of looks like it should flow with the C one A, especially since it's right next to the food pantry. And then right prior to that, you know, you kind of have the skeletons and it kind of goes down that way. So it wasn't out of line to be a C one A. It looked more out of line to be an R four to me.
So it's. Is across the street C one A?
It's catty. I think it, it is, isn't it? Yeah, because there's, there is, um, it's, um, what is the Benny, Benny Keith? Yeah, they have their trucks parked right across the street from it, and it's all in that area. There's really not really any housing across there that I could see right there. It's all more of an industrial kind of looking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I know the area really well. I'm just trying to think about zoning.
Right.
Because C one A allows commercial as well as R one, R two, R, R four.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in there. So I was just trying to understand why the move to a C one versus a C one A or C one A.
So it, it is contiguous to C one. That's the reason, because it would be, uh, spot zoning many times ago.
But across the street, I thought was C one A, is it not? I'm, I'm not looking at that right now, so.
No, I am. It's, uh, R four and then catty corner is C one and the rest.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, it seemed to flow with the area. It seemed more out of line to be an R four to me, so.
Well, I agree. It was real interesting, because the reason I raised the question, two thousand thirteen. Council changed a whole bunch over there from being a C one and created the C one A zoning. And took the businesses that were C. They created the C one A and they left some businesses as C one. Uh, and that's part of why I'm asking, just asking the question.
I think that was, I, I agree with you. I mean, I'm, that's what made sense to me. I didn't know what it had been previously, but it looked like it could have. And we, we had the conversation today, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring to you, which I mentioned earlier, the C two A. And we're kind of working together to clean all that up a little bit.
So just, so everyone's comfortable that if it becomes a C one. It can never have the R four designation again. Would have to come back to council again, do this all over again.
I don't know why it was R four to start with.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is the first reading. I'm gonna keep this reading in that small room, too, in my opinion.
Councilmember Escobedo.
I'm just curious. I mean, shouldn't C one and C one A be combined at the almost identity?
They are, except the.
Rob, do you want to come up too?
Yeah. Be the one to answer those questions.
It's not allowing R four, C one A does.
I think that needs to be a discussion for another meeting.
That's right.
The item on the agenda is rezone from an R four to a C one.
Yep.
They're not going after C one A. I think that's a discussion to put in at another meeting, um, especially as we go through the zoning changes and updates. Um, but the item on the agenda specifically is to go from R four to C one, which is what finding and zoning did. But I think the C one A discussion is actually a discussion for another time.
How do you understand the rationale? I'm gonna see one.
Okay, councilmember Nance.
The, uh, zoning map that we have on the website, is that from twenty ten?
From twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen.
This is the, the one that we haven't codified yet, but this is the one that's, you can actually kind of see it better.
So this is what we would be going.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go off.
Going and, and would change that.
Take a look at that before the second reading.
Yeah, that's why I.
Yep, yep. And then one last question. This would be from Megan and Geo possibly, the, um, the food pantry. So that has been rezoned, because on our, our current one here, I guess I could just look at the map and see it, but it's been rezoned over to commercial. It's right across the street from what was C one.
I don't believe so.
No, it was kind of strange, because to me, when I looked at the food pantry, I want to say, but I'm, I'm speaking from memory here, that it was still R four, which I, I was like, okay, well, I just know that it should be, should have been a C one, it looks like to me, yeah.
We got here.
But that's, I mean, wait.
R four. That's the food pantry. So I've kind of wondered if that ever happened, but.
Though, I know Mr. Walter did provide all the additions to update from two thousand thirteen to present. The codification and moving forward that zoning map is not something we're gonna do within the next few months. Because for that example, food pantry, do we want to go in and make those changes? But sticking with what the individual's request, he is requesting to go to the C one, which is allowed.
No question.
Are we ready to vote?
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven dash oh two?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Okay, so city secretary, the first reading of twenty twenty four dash oh seven dash oh two passes unanimously with all council members voting for. Moving on to action item C, city manager.
Approve replat twenty twenty four dash zero six dash zero one. A replat application allowing the applicant Penelope V Avery to amend the setback requirements of the subject property. The subject property is located at one three zero eight North Fourth Street and is legally described as Lot Seven, Block Forty-seven. North Edition located in the city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, according to the plat of sub, said subdivision, recorded in plat number one zero eight. In the office of the county clerk of Brewster County, Texas. The record property owner is Penelope V Avery. The property ID of the subject property is one one six six six. The current zoning classification of the property is R one, one family district. If the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain R one, one family district.
I need a motion.
Move to approve replat twenty twenty four dash zero six dash zero one as presented.
I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, discussion, city manager.
So, uh, Ms. Avery in, um, doing some, I, I believe it's a remodel.
It's a.
How do you building altogether? I apologize. Um, has come into some conflicts with our current setbacks and allowance, and we do, like I said, um, have Robert Rukis here to help explain the addition. Um, it has to deal with the property line, the setback, and the location of the new property. Um, it was suggested for her to replat for the easiest solution to her current, uh, situation, and I will let Mr. Rukis explain. I never understand how many feet you have to have on each side of a building.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so for this property, we went out to do an inspection on the footers, and we were looking at the batter boards. And I was like, that's pretty close. And so we measured it, and she was, I believe, three foot away. She needed to be at a minimum of five feet. Um, from the soft bit over to her property line. So that's when we made the recommendation, either move that property line over at least two feet, so you're within your five-foot setback. Or replot both of your properties, because she owns both of them, um, together, and then you're, you'll be fine. She opted to just move it over, I believe it was five feet in total. Um, which leaves the other lot, which is a corner lot, which are generally a little bigger, um, still well within our, um, regulations and their ordinance for zoning for anything to be built there, um, in that zoning.
Okay.
So that was the reason for the replot purpose.
Okay. Councilmember Stone.
What is she building?
House.
Yes. And so it's gonna be, you said, and, and correct me, and that you got a lot of cool jargon, I don't know. Three feet instead of five feet from the fence line, is that layman's terms?
That's a setback.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And so this is for fire setbacks.
Okay, okay. And do you have any concerns about that?
Yeah. None at all.
No questions.
No question I have. So then she still has the two separate parcels, so she can sell the other one off.
Absolutely, if she wants to.
Okay.
I don't have any questions if I can add that.
So was the contractor screwed up putting the batter board with her on the front, and basically the problem's getting solved.
Somebody messed up somewhere.
Yeah.
But I think the disconnect was because, um, the plans were originally with the, uh, garage on the north side of the property and the house on the south side. And she ended up flipping it, which threw everybody off, I guess. This is gonna be my best.
Yeah, I know, but that's, they should have caught that one.
Yeah.
Okay, so someone surveying out the batter board screwed up. Put it in.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Rob.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's vote.
I.
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 And I.
Okay, city manager, or city secretary, uh, replat twenty twenty four dash oh six dash oh one has been approved unanimously. All right, moving on to executive reports, city mayor report. I just want to thank Johnny for being here and Rob for being here. Thank you for having the directors here to answer questions for council, makes things so much more efficient. And Daryl and also Abel.
Enjoy.
And Joanna, yes, thank you for being here. Yes, because our commissioners totally volunteer, so thank you for being here. All right, um, city manager.
Um, just two items that I, I want to bring to the council attention. Um, one is a budget update. Currently, I've been working with Riley Dierling of Poshkiss. They are our insurance broker and looking at our insurance, which includes medical, dental, and vision for our employees. We're looking at upwards to an eleven percent increase over our current rate. So I'm working back with him because this does affect our budget to make sure we plan accordingly. Um, he's hoping to get it down to as possibly as low as seven percent. I do want to remind council that it's one of the benefits to working for the city of Alpine. The city does cover fifty percent of the dependent coverage. So this is something I do like to make sure you guys are aware of. We have larger increases. The other item even I've been working on that affects our budget is our leased vehicle. In two thousand seventeen, the city signed into an agreement with Enterprise for leased vehicles. I think this was a wise move of the city, because one, we have reliable vehicles for our departments. Two, it has reduced some of the costs on the maintenance, because we're not having to constantly replace transmissions and doors and everything else that has been falling apart. Unfortunately, over the time span of this contract, um, we didn't properly trade out and stagger those vehicles. So for this fiscal year, we're looking at nineteen vehicles being traded in in order to maintain the current lease. Um, which tells you within the past five years, we, we should have done this. Um, but, but with that being said, we aren't gonna do them all at once. We are gonna create that stagger so that allow, um, the budgeting to, to be better. Um, we are looking at an increase in the cost from anywhere from two hundred to four hundred dollars per vehicle, depending on what type of vehicle. So we're working back with Enterprise, or I'm working back with Enterprise, try to reduce that. Um, so that it doesn't, our budget is hard. But I wanted the council to be aware that you may see some fluctuation in the leased vehicles. Um, the other item that's been on my list for the budget is all the upcoming renewals. And the reason why I'm in this is because when we trade out, um, not just our enterprise vehicles, but we have all of our leased equipment. And that does come sometimes with an impact on the budget, because costs of everything has increased. And we also have our BBT contract that comes up for renewal. We aren't requesting any current changes within that contract. We've been very happy with their services. So we really shouldn't see an increase in the price. The other item that needs to be considered by council as we move into this next fiscal year is the emerging year contract. Um, it has a three-year annual renewal allowance. Um, and it was established in twenty twenty two, which means in market twenty-five. We are gonna look at renewing that. So as part of the budget, I'm gonna include a little bit of this increase. Um, because that will be a discussion in the next, uh, coming year. Um, also looking at the capital asset purchases and working with all of the departments. And we, we talked about the utilities needing, you know, the backhoe, the skid steer. These items are gonna be included in the actual operating, uh, budget. But I'm also working with several, uh, sources for funding, um, so that we may have an option to put a little bit of this in our debt side. Um, still under review. And then, of course, the last thing that I've been working on is, is reviewing our debt. Um, we have been paying it off steadily, so that's been a great improvement for the city, but that's part of what goes into this budget. Um, in addition to having to, we do it in Excel, so this, there's a lot of manual entry to this. Um, the next item I had on my update report was on August sixth, twenty twenty four, at four P M. I'd like to call a workshop, TMRS, which is our Texas Municipal Retirement System. Has we, uh, are providing some additional feedback of things that they can provide the city. And I know that it had been discussed in the past about how do we reduce our retirement if we're fully funded and cut back on what we pay. And currently, we're paying two point one four percent. Um, for twenty-five, it will be two point two percent. But part of what services they provide is providing an update and an overview of our retirement system. I think it would be great to have, uh, one of the representatives, it will be by Zoom, come and explain our current retirement system. Our city plan, which explains our, what our current active employees, and of course, our retirees. Um, our contribution rate and the impact of making changes. So ideally, we don't make changes to our plan, but I think it does need to be considered, especially as the cost of living for those who have retired has changed as well. So I'd like to hold that workshop on August sixth. They are available, um, to zoom in and kind of go over all the ins and outs of our retirement system. This workshop would be designed for council. TMRS does separate workshops designed for our employees, um, current, looking at retiring and provides them that, um, type of information. I didn't know if any of y'all, um, it is a regular scheduled city council meeting day, so that's what we've been trying to do is schedule them on that day. But I thought this was a good thing, especially when we're looking at our budget and understanding where we're at with our retirement. Do you want me to think that?
Great. All right.
I just wanted to know when we might be expecting the comprehensive pay plan to be presented.
So we have our first tentative meeting, what's to engage all the employees July eighth. Um, so after July eighth, we'll kind of start getting that feedback from them. They're hoping to have something mid-September, um, tentatively to start presenting. Um, of course, it would be phase one, phase two, year one, year two, but that's tentatively what we're looking at. It really is dependent on if that feedback doesn't come as quick as we had.
And so we're waiting on feedback from employees?
Yeah.
At a point of order, we're not allowed to have discussion of the reports there, presentation, or me. You have the open meeting, Dan?
Oh, I see that. Yeah, I noticed. Thank you.
No problem. And she has.
Sustained. Thank you. Yeah, it does say that. No discussion may take place. Right.
The items have to be listed on the agenda.
Right.
That's the whole. Okay.
And I'm gonna look at a member forward, because if we can't have discussion, city manager, what do we do here? So I'll go work it on the minimum, chapter twenty-three.
Thank you. All right, so councilmember comments.
Um, having that, uh, what we got out there, I'm hoping that we can move that, uh, forward much quicker. We promised city employees, we promised folks of a fifteen dollar hour minimum wage. We've said that's going in. Um, you know, this fiscal year, it seems like we're in delays there, um, and, um, it grinds my gears, and that's all I got right there.
Okay. Councilmember.
No comments.
All right, and I just want to thank everybody again. Thank you. And that brings us to item number thirteen, or item number fourteen. Executive session pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time. As deemed necessary during this meeting for posted agenda items or to receive advice from attorneys as permitted by law. Tonight, the city council will recess into executive session pursuant to section five five one, point oh seven one of the Texas Government Code. We are going to have a discussion with our attorney. May I get a motion to move into executive session?
Make a motion and move into executive session?
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion. Let's vote.
I.
Bye.
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 So city secretary, we're gonna move into executive session at seven fifty-nine P M. So city secretary, we're going to move into executive session at seven fifty-nine P M.
May I have a motion to reconvene into open session?
Motion to reconvene in open session.
I need a second. Okay, discussion. Let's vote.
Aye.
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 City Secretary unanimously voted to reconvene into open session. Now that we are in open session, that takes us to the next item, action after executive session.
Can you note that?
Oh, sorry, thank you. Time is eight fifty-one. Um, action.
To layer. Uh, I move that we authorize the city manager to have discussions with property owners that are aligned with the long-term city comprehensive plan.
I need a second.
Six.
Discussion. Let's vote.
Aye.
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 City Secretary, the motion has passed unanimously. All right, and I have a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Adjourned at eight fifty-five.